Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands.
A nation.
Under God.
Under God. It's visible, visible.
Liberty.
Liberty, justice, for all.
All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Priest, new guy. I won't do it anymore. You have something for us to read?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open being law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCAT Government Cable Access Television, BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda of our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388. Meeting number 17330786. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, before we move along, the agenda of items, I'm gonna ask everyone, uh, for a moment of silence. A lot of, a lot of us knew Mr. Ron McKenzie. He's passed away, uh, on October 29th. He's a former selectman. Uh, he's been a lawyer in town, a couple other boards. Um, wonderful gentleman. I got the pleasure to know him through a couple of, uh, things he did as a law firm. So if we could just take one minute and, uh, um, and give him his due here. Thank you. Okay, Joe. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate that. Uh, would anybody like to speak about Ron for a second before we start our meeting? I know, Mike, you knew him very well over the years.
Yeah, um, I, I have, uh, for, for quite a few years, he was a, a, a good friend of, uh, uh, my father-in-law and, uh, for many years, and, uh, also knew him, um, when he was, you know, uh, as a senator, as well as our veterans agent here in town, and, um, spent a little bit of time with him socially as well. So, uh, my condolences, uh, to Ron's family and, uh, his partner, Ian, and, um, yeah, it was certainly be missed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan, any, any comments?
No, it's, he was, um, the veterans agent prior to Bill Lewis, and, uh, what Bill learned from Ron, he passed on to me. So it was, uh, it was a good learning experience.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I only had the opportunity to meet, uh, Ron a couple of times in the past couple of years, uh, but always a, a great conversationalist and a very, very kind man. Um, and my condolences to his family. It's a, it's a very heavy loss.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really didn't know Mr. McKenzie yet well, but, uh, if you know, his life revolved around public service, whether it be in the, the town level, the state level, uh, I just want to commend him for all his years of public service and I wish all the best to his family.
Thank you, everybody. Um, Mr. Sagarino, any comments, or would you like to just move along to, uh, first, uh, agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did not have the opportunity to interact with Mr. McKenzie, uh, very much in my career, so I don't, I don't know him very well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, so why don't we just start? Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first up, we have, uh, Chief Kent here for some appointments in our police department.
Thank you, Paul. Um, we have four, uh, uh, young people we're bringing forth for a hopeful appointment tonight, and I'm gonna start in alphabetical order. Um, the first young man is Darryl Calicchio, who was born and raised in Burlington. He's a graduate of Burlington High School. Um, he's also a graduate of Bridgewater State University, where he has a bachelor's in criminal justice and psychology. Um, he was on the dean's list six out of his eight semesters. Um, he is currently enrolled at Southern New Hampshire University, where he is a candidate for an MBA with a focus on accounting. He's currently employed by Ally Universal on, at the State Street Financial Center, where he is a behavior detection supervisor, um, a field training officer, a security operations manager. Um, and, and through that job, uh, he's had training in vehicle dynamics, protective evasive driving, and executive protection, a hundred-hour course. Um, in 2015, he was the winner of the National Security Personnel of the Year Award for Ally Universal. Um, he's a member of the U.S. Army Reserve. He has been since 2011. He's a, he's assigned to the Civil Affairs Team as a sergeant, E6. Uh, prior to that, he was on the Civil Affairs Battalion. He completed Army Basic Training, um, Civil Affairs Advanced Individual Training and Advanced Leadership Courses in the military. And as I say, he is still currently serving on a reserve staff. So I would recommend Darryl Calicchio for appointment as a patrolman for the town of Ann Arbor.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Darryl Calicchio to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
So moved by, and seconded by somebody?
Me. I.
Thank you, me. All right, we're gonna go through a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Uh, before I vote, uh, Chief, could you give Darryl a message for me? He owes me 20 pushups.
I'll let him know.
Let him know that, and I'm gonna vote yes on that, please.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. All right. Do you have another one?
Um, number two is Eric Jeskey, uh, who's from Wilmington, Mass. Uh, he's currently, has been employed since 2016 at Reading Lumber. He's a yard supervisor, where he supervises six to eight employees every day. There, he manages inventory, deliveries, and equipment. Um, he attended the Thomas College in Waterville, Maine, and has a degree from UMass Amherst in political science, which he received in 2017. Um, I would recommend Eric Jeskey for a position of patrolman within the Burlington Police Department.
Do I have a motion on that?
Hold on, Chief. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We make the appointment first.
I thought you just did. Go ahead.
Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Eric Jeskey to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
No move.
Oh, there they are. There's the twin towers. Thank you, guys. All right, um, Bob, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest? Nick, you want to do?
I was on mute, yes.
Okay, thank you. And myself, yes. So 5-0-0, Betty.
Oh, no pushups still?
I don't know this gentleman. You might know the next one.
Our next candidate is, um, Thomas Lyons. Again, Burlington born and bred, graduated from Burlington High in 2015. He has a degree from Johnson and Wales University in Criminal Justice, uh, where he graduated in 2019 with a GPA of 3.68. Um, he's currently employed by the Derry, New Hampshire Police Department, um, since August of 2019, and he attended and graduated from the New Hampshire Police Academy in March of 2020. I would recommend Thomas Lyons for appointment as a patrolman in the town of Ann Arbor.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Thomas Lyons to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
No move.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Jim. Let's go down the list. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. 5-0-0.
All right. I appreciate no one picking up on that slip.
Except for Jim.
I think that's because of the gentleman before that, where he went to school, got into my head. Um, the last appointment tonight is Nicholas Scola from Belrika. Um, he has a degree from Plymouth State University in Criminal Justice. Um, while at Plymouth State, he was the president of the Plymouth State Rugby Club, 2017 to 2019. Um, he also interned at the Burlington Police Department in 2019. Um, he has a certificate as an open water diver, EMT. Um, he attended the New Hampshire Fire Academy. Um, he was prior employed by the Plymouth, New Hampshire Fire Department as an on-call firefighter, EMT. He's currently employed by the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, um, as a corrections officer, and he is a Marine Corps veteran. I would recommend Nicholas for appointment to the Burlington Police Department as a patrolman.
Uh, thank you, Chief. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Nicholas Scola to a position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
No move.
Move for the seconded. We're gonna have, um, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, we have one more, uh, special police officer appointment.
Oh, the more, yeah, that's right. Someone's retiring in a couple days.
That's right. Um, it's always, uh, bittersweet when, um, when someone retires, but, uh, thankfully, this individual will hopefully, uh, with your approval, be staying as a special police officer. Detective Gary Redfern is retiring, uh, Wednesday, which will mark his, uh, he was appointed to the police department 11-4, 1985, and he's retiring on his anniversary date. Um, he attended the Metropolitan Police Academy, graduating May 23rd, 1986, and he was appointed detective March 14th, 2005. Um, anyone who knows Gary, had any interaction with him, uh, Jimmy worked very closely with him for a couple of years. Um, one of the most thorough, smartest police officers I've ever met, and the detective, when you assigned him a case, um, you knew that, uh, you know, proverbial no stone was gonna be unturned. Gary handled, um, just about all of our, uh, financial cases, which are extremely, uh, complicated. Um, frankly, some days he'd come in to fill me in on a case, and halfway through it, he would have lost me because it's so complicated. But, uh, he's gonna be missed as a detective, but we certainly, um, appreciate his years of service, and Gary's just an all-around good guy with a great attitude, and, um, someone that people look up to within the department. So he's gonna be missed as a detective, big shoes to fill, but I am happy he's gonna stay affiliated with the police department, as I recommend him for a special police officer appointment.
Uh, congratulations, uh, to Detective Redfern for me. Uh, just a tremendous career and, and a great guy to work with. Uh, Chief, how is the detective bureau gonna continue on without Selectmen Tigges and now losing Gary?
Big, big shoes to fill.
Uh, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Gary Redfern to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
No move.
Second.
Joe, you're on mute.
Betty, did you do that? Um, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, yes, but I'd like a, a, a second, Joe, if you don't mind.
Mike, after I have the vote, I'm gonna give everybody a minute to go, and I'll go first.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So it's a 5-0-0. Mike, the floor is yours.
Sorry, um, sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, I would just like to say, I've known Gary Redfern for over 50 years. We grew up in the same neighborhood together, uh, went to school and graduated, uh, Burlington High together. Um, spent a good deal of my career at the fire department, um, showing up at a lot of the same calls as Gary has. So I've known him for, for a long, long, long time, and the chief is exactly right. He's, he's an incredibly, uh, talented, uh, man, dedicated, uh, not only to the police department, but this town, and it's been my pleasure to know Gary for so many years, and I wish him nothing but the best in retirement.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges, you worked with him?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the chief was not selling Detective Redfern short. He was an incredible go-getter. Um, he was diligent. He, he just, when he locked into something, he saw it through to the end. Um, he was, uh, a mentor to me. He's been a mentor to many other officers in the department and detectives, known beyond Massachusetts, beyond Burlington, beyond Mass, just a, a wealth of knowledge and, and, um, I know it'll be tough shoes to fill, but knowing the, the officers and detectives we have, I'm sure there'll be someone, uh, that can step right up to the plate and next man up, I guess. But, uh, congratulations to Gary.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I only knew Gary through our association, uh, as employees of the town, uh, but he was always very cordial and, um, a dignified man. And listening to other people speak so highly of him, uh, it, it makes me concerned that, um, over the next year, we're gonna have a number of these officers retire, and the people we do hire are gonna have to be extraordinary just to keep up, uh, with the guys who are leaving. So, uh, good luck, Gary. Congratulations on your 35 years.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, stop letting these people retire. No, I, I hold nothing but admiration and respect for, for Mr. Redfern and, uh, you know, anyone who, you know, is, is what is, can step up and, and serve a community like, you know, the, the great men and women who serve, uh, our own. So, uh, I, I wish him well in his retirement, and, uh, hopefully he, uh, he enjoys it. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, I do have a couple of comments about Mr. Redfern, uh, real quickly. Um, you know, if you take away the Burlington Police Department, he's the type of guy that you wanna hang around with anyway. He's that, he's that nice of a person all the way around. You put the police department in there, and he's even a better person because he's helping out with the community, with, um, your, your break-ins and everything else that happens in this town. He's been a great detective. Uh, can't say enough about the guy. Uh, proud to call him my friend, and I'm very happy that he's gonna stay here in town and, uh, still do detail, so we can wave to him, because we really don't get to see the detectives a lot in this town. So Gary, wish you all the best, my friend. Hope you enjoy it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Priest, uh, Mr. Priest, Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very happy, uh, to report to you and the board, uh, that we're once again able to attract and hire a top candidate in our pool for a very important, uh, position, building commissioner. Uh, I would like to thank the members of our search committee, uh, Joanne Faust, Kristen Kazner, Rick Parker, John Denethio, uh, Selectmen Priest, uh, and myself, who spent a lot of time assisting with the project. I would also like to give a very special thank you to our former building, uh, commissioner, John Clancy, uh, for coming out of retirement to help us, uh, with this search and with the transition. Uh, with that, I present to you Mark Dupell. Uh, Mark is a Massachusetts Certified Building Commissioner, former Marine, uh, currently resides in Chelmsford. Um, he has spent his local government career working his way up through various positions of responsibility, uh, in several neighboring communities, including Reading, Chelmsford, and Tinsborough. Uh, prior to that, he held the, the position of Commercial Construction Supervisor for Chapman Construction. Uh, and with that introduction, Mr. Chairman, I appoint Mark Dupell to the position of Inspector of Buildings, uh, for the town of Burlington, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, but I also want to remind Paul that there's no such thing as a former Marine.
Okay, motion made, and seconded by... Somebody?
Second.
Okay, Jimmy, you're, okay, now we'll have the vote, please. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, um, I see we have Mark here. I believe that's him.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It is. Mark, would you like to speak?
Um, um, I thank all of you for appointing me, and, um, I want to thank Paul and Joanne and John Clancy and everybody for, um, helping me get to this point, and, um, I'll do bones and proud. Maybe not as proud as John Clancy, but I'll be right there with him.
Well, that's good. That's good to know. Thank you very much, and, uh, I can't wait till we actually get to meet everybody in person.
Yeah, me also.
So, uh, gentlemen, any comments from the board itself?
Just welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, congratulations, Mark, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and you're correct, big shoes to fill, but, uh, have all the confidence in the world that you'll be able to step right up.
Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Marcus, it's, it's great to have you, and, uh, nervous to work with you. So, uh, get settled in, because, uh, it's, uh, it's a great town to be working for, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark, in case you didn't notice, that's Nicholas Priest. He had a beard when you did the interviews, just in case you don't recognize him. He is a selectman in town, and we're all trying to get to know Nick and Tom right now, so just wanted to point that out to you. Thank you.
Uh, some of us have to keep our beards, because we have no looks.
It's all good.
I'll take that as a compliment.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, Mr. Sagarino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we now have our treasurer collector, Gary Giannino, here, uh, with an appointment in our treasurer collector's office.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Um, tonight I'd like to put forth, uh, through Paul, if he gets to it, the, uh, position of, uh, payroll administrator, our president, or our past administrator, had, had an opportunity to move over to the school system in Burlington, so she stayed with us, but has moved over to there. Uh, we went through a process, uh, over two weeks or so, and Amanda Marcotti is the, our, uh, who I'm recommending this evening for the, uh, position. Amanda is present at the meeting tonight. She has spent the last three years with the city of Melrose, uh, with those last two years, uh, as the payroll coordinator, and, uh, has a very strong work, uh, work ethic. I spoke to her, uh, previous employer, who, uh, the town treasurer, the city treasurer, Arthur Flavin, and had a very good conversation with him. Originally, uh, Cheryl Lynn, Terry Clement, and myself, uh, met with Amanda over the, uh, over the WebEx. Uh, Amanda then, uh, came in, uh, on, on her time to, uh, meet with Deb and, and reviewed how we, uh, perform the payroll. Uh, Amanda has very strong munis experience, which was, uh, tough. We find ourselves, uh, I find myself very, uh, lucky to have, uh, found, uh, Amanda at the, and timing is everything. So I know Amanda had some opportunities, uh, with another community, and, uh, I'm happy to say she has, uh, chosen hers. So, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Paul. Uh, but, uh, my recommendation is, uh, the approval and, and ask the board to, uh, waive the 15 days. Amanda's scheduled, if approved, tonight to start on November 16th.
Uh, thank you, Gary. Uh, with that introduction, Mr. Chairman, I appoint Amanda Marcotti to the position of payroll administrator for the town of Burlington, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Do I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Okay, Bob Hogan and Jimmy Tiggs, uh, we'll go through a roll call vote once again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations, Amanda. Would you like to speak?
Thank you for appointing me.
You're welcome.
Good point.
That's beautiful. I like that. Uh, gentlemen, any, any comments, Mr. Hogan?
No, just welcome to Burlington.
Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, um, I, I gotta, I gotta ask Paul, you get the, uh, we keep looking people to the school committee, uh, uh, school department over there. Lots of, some good people. Um, anyhow, Amanda, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Mr. Priest?
Uh, yeah, Amanda, welcome, and, uh, you know, welcome, welcome to Burlington.
Jimmy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amanda, welcome aboard, and, um, I think you'll like your time here in Burlington. The, the people at Town Hall are phenomenal to deal with. They're great employees, great friends, and I think you'll like it here.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Amanda, I'll say really quickly, uh, welcome to Burlington. Um, big shoes to fill in this town. We have a great, um, town hall. Everybody in here is, uh, very friendly, nice. I'm sure if Gary, uh, introduced you to us, I'm, you're gonna do a great job for this town. So thank you very much for accepting it. Appreciate it.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Sagarino?
A lot of appointments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Uh, as the board is aware, uh, we received a letter, uh, from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, looking for you to appoint a representative for the town of Burlington, uh, and an alternate. Uh, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is a regional planning agency, serving the people who live and work in the 101 cities and towns of metropolitan Boston. Uh, was established in 1963. Uh, MAPC is a public agency, created under Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 24. Uh, the MAPC is governed by representatives from each city and town in our region, as well as gubernatorial appointees and designees of your public agencies. Uh, so we are looking to appoint, looking for the board to appoint a member and an alternate to this position, and this is a board appointment, so I won't be saying the, uh, I believe the actual text of the motion we're looking for was in your backup. So if one of the selectmen, uh, when you have a candidate, wouldn't mind, um, reading that, it would be appreciated.
Um, gentlemen, um, I've talked about this, uh, individually to each one of you. Um, I think we're all in agreement, uh, after going through a couple of different names and so forth. Uh, Mr. Espojo, uh, showed a lot of interest in, um, taking this position with Melissa as the backup. Um, if there's anything that's changed, please, uh, I'll go through the list right now before we, uh, make a motion for that. Um, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Priest.
Uh, no, no, nothing's changed here, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think that, uh, Mike being on the, on the planning board and being our, uh, representative, uh, would be, uh, a, a great, uh, coordination of, of efforts, and, uh, I think having Melissa as a backup is, is also, uh, great. So you, you've got my support there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, to echo what Nick said, um, Mr. Espojo's experience on the Board of Appeals and Planning Board, uh, I think make him a, a, a great candidate for this, and, uh, again, I also agree with, uh, Melissa was the alternate.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I, I agree for both names. I think, uh, Mr. Uh, I'm, John and, uh, Melissa are both gonna make, uh, good representatives for us, and they'll be keeping in touch with each other, uh, when it's need be.
Mr. Runyon?
No, sir, all set.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so if somebody has that in front of them, um, the, uh, the appointment itself, could you, uh, does, does anybody have that in front of them? They could read that?
Yeah, I have it here, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I can go ahead and, uh...
Yep.
Make, make, in, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, uh, Section 24, um, I made the motion that we appoint, uh, Mike Espojo as the Town Board Representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Uh, the appointment, uh, will be lasting for a term of three years, effective July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2023. And in addition, uh, that, as the alternate representative for the same term in length.
Uh, you're muted, Joe, but if you're looking for a second, I'll second that.
Thank you. I don't want to keep getting muted. Anyway, um, so if motion's made and seconded, um, we'll start from the list. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I called him John, but it is, it's Mike. Yes.
All right. Probably the second nicest thing he's been called all night. Um, Mike?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Runyon? Welcome, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Mirandi, yes, so five zero zero, Betty, thank you. And uh, Mrs. Sagorino, if you could let Mr. Espoio know this. Um, I, I don't see him on here, he could be, but uh, just let him know he's all set, okay?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next set of appointments, I'm gonna turn it over to Selectman Priest. Uh, he has an update and a request um, to appoint some members to the new ISAC committee, um, sort of as voted by town meeting updated the bylaw here for the ISAC committee and uh, Selectman Priest has been working uh, with this, the ISAC committee and he has some appoint, appointments for consideration for that committee.
Thank you, Paul. Um, so yes, so uh, after town meeting voted to uh, institute uh, the Information Securities Advisory Committee as a standing committee, uh, we had to uh, reappoint uh, and readjust in accordance with the new bylaw. So, uh, there are five at-large members, uh, as well as, that will serve three-year terms, as well as uh, four uh, employees uh, appointed from the town. Someone from town administration, someone from public safety, someone from school department and someone from the library. Um, I worked with the uh, now former ISAC uh, to uh, garner some names. Uh, there were already quite a few folks helping out, uh, both from a residential perspective as well as uh, from uh, the town side. Uh, you made a lot of folks uh, pitching in to keep that conversation alive and uh, you know, uh, I worked and, and reached out to a lot of folks and, and heard back from a bunch of folks that would like to, uh, either like remain and move forward and uh, as well as reaching out to uh, town employees to ensure that uh, we had the right folks in those positions. So, uh, Paul, I didn't notice if the names were in the backup or not. Um, I just saw the um, the agenda item in the back. Do we have the list of names or should I pull that out?
I do not have the list of names in front of me. I'm not sure if Betty has it.
Have we discussed these names before?
So the only, the only name that we have not discussed is uh, Ben Axelrod, who is a resident. Um, he uh, was not on the former ISAC. He currently uh, works at iRobot, um, expressed interests. Uh, everybody else we've discussed uh, has uh, served in the former ISAC in some capacity uh, and all have appropriate backgrounds, uh, which in this case I think is, is crucial. Um, but um, he's, he'd be the only one.
Quick question. The old ISAC committee, is that gone for good now or is, is it still in existence?
I believe it's just, just gone for good. It, it gets dissolved and, and this one takes its place as a, as the permanent one. One moment while I pop the names. Almost there. Okay, so uh, the at-large positions, because there are five of them, we have uh, Steve Moran, uh, David Hughes, David Miller, Philip Pascal and Ben Axelrod. And then our public safety, uh, roles being filled by Glenn Mills, uh, schools, Bob Kuna, uh, library, Michael Wick, and from administration, we have Joe Bonjour.
Do, do we need to um, stagger those uh, the five that we do so that every year, every year, there's a, a couple that are up for uh, reappointment?
It's a great question.
It's kinda like every other board in town?
Yeah.
Uh, may I speak?
Absolutely, Betty.
If we were to appoint a temporary committee, they had staggered years. They do not have it in the bylaw. All appointments shall be three years, but for this first year, I, I'm not sure if you shall or not. It's up to you.
Well, I, I, I think it's important. I mean, we have it with all the other boards for a reason because it's good to have continuity and not have five new people show up in a couple of years. But, but do we have, e- even if we do, we can work that out. We don't have to do that for the moment.
Um, so if, if, as a part of the bylaw, it does say that um, we can appoint them as two members for three years, two members for two years and, and uh, one for one, I think is what it says here. Um, so we could stagger them effectively and then go from there.
And I don't have a problem which ones are chosen. I just, but I think it's important we do it at least now or for the next meeting. Sure.
If I could speak for a minute?
Yes, Betty.
In the absence of an active committee, that's how you would set it up. However, town meetings set it up that all appointments shall be for three years. So for the first year that they are, that we are setting this up, you could perhaps start with three, two, one, and then thereafter, it'll just continue on with the three-year periods.
Right, so right, right now, we don't have an active committee, therefore we would do a three, two, one, and then they'd have full three-years uh, terms to keep that cycle.
Thereafter.
A year, yes, every year. So the one year would be up next year for your appointment.
Correct. I mean, I mean, if you want, we can just break it up according to the list. So I mean, you know, Steve Moran, David Hughes would take the, the, the three-year seats. David Miller and Philip Pascal would take the two-year seats and Ben Axelrod would take the one-year seat, uh, then we can go from there.
That's fine. Everyone shaking their head, yes, that's fine? I see that, okay. Okay, um, so at this point, uh, is that the motion, Nick, or are you making a motion on that for those people?
Uh, I can make the motion, certainly. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we appoint uh, Steve Moran and David Hughes for uh, initial three-year term, David Miller and Philip Pascal for a two-year term, uh, and Ben Axelrod for a one-year term to the ISAC as well as appointing uh, Glenn Mills, Bob Kuna, Michael Wick and Joe Bonjour to represent the uh, town.
So motion by Nick, second by?
I'll second.
All three years, raise your hands. Mike?
It doesn't matter.
Any comments on this before we vote on it?
I have one question, Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jimmy.
With regards to the staff on the committee, um, there's no, we don't control their term at all or um, there, there's just a point like, so say somebody retires, they just fill their own slot?
Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, we would control the appointment.
Correct. I think uh, Selectman Priest is correct. Uh, the board will be appointing those members as well.
Okay. Thank you. You all set with that, Jimmy?
You're saying I'm good.
Mike, anything? No. Mr. Hogan?
Uh, did we, are we, uh, it's a technicality thing, but do we have uh, the right name that we're gonna vote on? I don't think it's called ISAC anymore, is it?
That I don't know.
Um, I think it has an extra S in it.
It does, so it's, it's ISAC, Information Systems Security Advisory Committee.
That's correct.
ISAC is two S's.
Okay. Okay, so we got all that straight. The motion's been made and seconded, everybody spoke, and now we'll have a vote. So we'll go right down the list. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges? Mr. Priest, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Yes.
Miranda, yes. Okay. It's all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you know, we received a quest, a request from the Sculpture Park Committee and uh, I'll, at this point, I'll ask you to turn it over to Selectman Priest and I know that Mr. Sax is also in the meeting. I'm not sure if anyone else is here uh, for this agenda item, but uh, Nick and uh, Mr. Sax.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, so just uh, I'll just briefly set it up and then I'll turn it over. I see Mr. Sax and Mr. Rakovich uh, in the, in the meeting, so I can let them speak. Uh, but really, you know, the, the Sculpture Spark Committee has been making great headway since all the sculptures they're in to keep uh, basically the, the marketability of the park up. Um, and really, you know, uh, you know, we had a, a naming contest for uh, the dog statue approved by the artist. Uh, you know, getting people involved, uh, various different, you know, efforts being, being made. Uh, and recently, there has been talk of uh, having some benches put in uh, so folks can come and sit and enjoy the space. Uh, because these benches would be made of stone, uh, we thought it would be pertinent to bring it back to the board to have this discussion. Um, so I know that uh, uh, Mr. Sax and Mr. Rakovich have some uh, talking points and some pictures to share, uh, so I'll turn it over to them and uh, I'll be here for questions.
Mr. Sax?
Okay, can uh, people hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yes, George from the high school's here. Uh, basically, uh, the sculpture park has been very well received, but there's no place to sit. And so we talked to the rec department about the benches that they uh, usually use, which are around s- I think around eight hundred dollars. Uh, and it came to our attention, I don't remember exactly how, that somebody located a young sculptor who uh, had started making uh, he's a stone sculptor who was also, had just made a stone bench. And everybody thought, well, that would be really cool. Uh, so I have a, if I can do a screenshot, I'll show you the work that this young fellow uh, Joshua Ruder has done. Uh, let me see, can I go to share? Share screen, yeah, there we go. Uh, share? Now, alright, so I have here, uh, there's an example of a stone bench. Everybody seeing that?
Yep.
It's kinda funky. It's got a big stone and then a slab and then it's got a little stone on the other side, and so it would be a bench that would kinda look like a sculpture. Uh, here's a different view of it. Here's a close-up view. He actually cuts into the stone and marries the two parts together. And here's other examples of the sculpture work that he does. Uh, so let me uh, can I unshare my screen? Stop sharing. So uh, uh, one of the questions was where are we gonna get such big stones? And it turns out, because I'm connected with the Mary Cummings Park situation, that when the trustees finish their work over there, they have a whole bunch of really big stones left over. I mean, two, three, four foot stones. And I asked them, I said, uh, do you have extras? And they said, absolutely. Not only do they have extras, but they have a bunch of slab granite that would be perfect benches. And we went over there with the sculptor and he thought the benches would make that, the, the granite slabs would be great. So then what we have to do is we have to bring over these big rocks. Uh, and then he's gonna kinda sculpt them all into benches. We're gonna have one near the entrance that has a back on it because somebody explained to us that senior citizens need a bench with a back. So the bench that's near the entry will have a back, so people can sit and rest on it. And then there'll be one probably up toward the back entrance uh, toward the elderly housing, which has been a popular entrance back there. And I don't remember exactly where we said the third one's gonna go, somewhere along the edges. Uh, and so then we reached out to uh, George at the high school to see wh- what school interest there was. And George, you wanna pick it up?
Sure, yeah. Look, there is interest. Um, I have, of our four teachers, I have a sculpt, sculpture teacher who would love to be part of this herself and also would like to engage her, um, her sculpture classes, um, encourage them to, to do this as well, the individual students. And then I have an architecture teacher who wants to, to create a project out of this with her class. Um, so we've got several students who are in classes, plus I have a student who just uh, contacted me this morning. Um, and, and you know, I, I presented this to them maybe a couple of weeks ago. Uh, she was, she's a freshman. She said, I'd really love to be part of this. Um, I think it's a great learning opportunity for them, um, to be out in the field doing three-dimensional work, uh, would be a fantastic experience for them. And it's a, it's um, it would use tools that they would not have the opportunity to use in the, in this, in the uh, in the schools.
Okay, thank you. Um, gentlemen, we'll get to questions in one second. I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Sagorino first. Uh, Paul, do we have the, the resources to get these rocks to that site?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to Public Works and they were gonna send uh, Mr. Anderson out to check out the rocks and, and to determine whether or not we had the appropriate equipment. I think uh, clearly there's some of them uh, that we should be able to move uh, with our standard equipment, but there are some that may be too large, large for us as well. But uh, he was gonna uh, take a look and just see what we could do and, and how we could support this initiative in-house.
Okay, so if we can't move them, what happens at that point with these rocks? Or do we, is this a cost to the town? Is it a cost to the, who's, who's gonna pay a private contractor to come in for that?
I think if we've got stones that are too big to move, we'll choose smaller ones. You know?
I did like that answer.
Yeah. I don't see, uh, I mean, I don't know. Frank has been fantastic when it came to pouring the bases and just everything. They've been fantastic. So I, I don't know. Um,
Okay, let me, let me get to the board and I'll ask, I'll, I'll let them ask the questions. That was my biggest concern first. We'll start with uh, Mr. Priest. He's on the committee, so um, Nick, what, what comments or any questions for yourself or wanna move along to the board members?
Uh, the, the only thing I had was the same question you had, Mr. Chairman, was around the, the mobility of the stones, so uh, I think we can figure that out.
Alright, Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, John, I agree with you. The uh, the sculptures uh, that, that are on the site currently in large part have been well-received um, by the community. Um, I have met with the uh, historical committee on a, on a couple of occasions. Uh, they've expressed um, uh, an interest in reclaiming that site. They have uh, numerous uh, historical artifacts uh, that they think are, are, are more appropriate for that site. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm actually leaning towards uh, at the end of our two-year uh, trial period with uh, uh, allowing the, these sculptures to perhaps be sprinkled around the town common and uh, uh, reclaiming that, that property for the historical commission. I'm thinking at this point, if we were to bring in such large rocks, I think would only be rubbing salt in the wound of the uh, uh, folks uh, over there at the historical commission. I think they're anxious for that two-year period to end. And um, they've got, as, as Paul will tell you, they've got numerous items in storage all over town that they would love to display. Uh, and I think that uh, w- would be a more appropriate site for their items and move some of the sculptures uh, to other areas of the town, sprinkled around the common or, or, or elsewhere. So I'd be opposed to bringing in such large uh, stones at this point, uh, for those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jonathan, uh, you mentioned that the rocks, or the stones wouldn't be that big. You'd find smaller stones. Uh, will these benches, will the stones be adhered to one another? Uh, the reason, what I'm thinking is vandalism. Someone being able to pick up one of the stones if it's too small, uh, or if it's not attached. It, it, will this be secure, uh, will it be uh, almost vandalism-proof, I guess, is my question?
Well, I think the benches would be way more vandalism-proof than the sculptures. Let me put it to you that way. Uh, yeah, I, I, I don't know if they're actually uh, glued or bolted in place, uh, but those uh, those cross-piece stones are, are pretty substantial. I think it would take a bunch of kids with a bunch of crowbars to dislodge them.
Well, that was my fears, that someone would uh, you know, not so much lift them up, but knock them over and then the bench is gone or damaged.
Well, vandalism has been a question, an ongoing question. One of the things that we've been working on as a sideline is trying to figure out how to get some video surveillance on, or, uh, it's not exactly obvious how to go about that. Our feeling has been that being as it's next to the police station provides us a certain amount of uh, comfort about that. But we would like, uh, we would like to at some point get some video surveillance going.
Okay, I just wanted to raise my concern about the stones being movable, too small, that they uh, could be subject to vandalism and potentially getting someone hurt. That's all.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Mr. Hogan? Paul? You wanna mute?
Sorry about that. Um, George, uh, relative to the students participating, um, are they gonna have to move the stones, uh, when they, uh, work on them? I, I want to make sure that the kids are okay, uh, when they have to start moving these heavy stones. And also, um, I know there was a discussion about a year or so ago, Jonathan, uh, relative to liability if someone were to get hurt, either putting this together or sitting on it and having it collapse.
Uh, as far as the, uh, moving the stones, we talked about them being part of the process. We didn't, we wouldn't put them in, in danger in any way. And, uh, there would be some waiver and, and some security measures. Um, of course, the parents would sign off on this, so we'd make sure that, um, whatever we're doing is, uh, approved by the parents themselves. And, uh, you know, we always have field trip forms. This would be something a lot more than that, um, as stone cutting. We want to, want them to be part of it, but we don't want to put them in any sort of a danger at all. Um, and, and as far as moving the stones, I imagine that's, that would be the same case. You know, if they're too heavy, we would not make the, the students move them at all.
Alright, thank you, George. Jonathan?
Um, yeah, in regard to Mike's point about the historical commission, what happened with us is that we proceeded for a year and a half, about, I guess, a full year as a committee. Committee walked the, uh, the common, Simon's Park. And the committee as a group felt that that space between police and, uh, the, uh, grand view was a nice protected spot. It was quieter, uh, the traffic was less and you could have kids running around there and the parents would be, uh, you know, feel more secure. So everybody seemed to think it was great. Then we, we got going on it. And then I got called into a historical commission meeting where they explained that, uh, they had plans for that and they were absolutely opposed to what we were doing. Uh, we asked them to join, we, we went to the, back to the planning board of which we are a subcommittee and we said, uh, we, we changed our rules to request a member of the historical commission join us so that we could work together on this, but they refused. They said that, uh, what I understood them to say was that they didn't want to participate in any way, shape or form in what we were doing because that would imply a degree of consent with what we're doing and they were, uh, absolutely opposed to it. Uh, it was very late in our process and it was, and this is something, uh, you know, we had been in the newspapers, we had been on B-Cat, it was not a secret process at all. But, uh, we found out very late that they had other plans. Uh, we said, well, it's only gonna be two years and then we'll figure it out. Um, I'm not sure, I am not at all happy that they're not happy. I would love to not have this be a burr under the saddle. Uh, and it is true that we have these works for two years lease, if you call it a lease or a whatever. Um, and if we, any of them were to become permanent, we have to raise the money to buy them. And I, I think that very soon we were gonna start looking at raising the money to buy them. Now, when Frank Anderson poured the foundations, the round foundations, uh, they are reinforced with, uh, steel and they have cables sticking out the sides specifically to make it possible to pick them up with a front-end loader and move them. So we could actually move the sculpture park to a different location. Um, uh, I think I would suggest that the opinion of the sculpture committee, if I could speak for them, would be that nothing has happened on that space for twenty or thirty or forty years. The minute we put something up there, opposition showed up. And I guess what I feel like is if the historical commission has a plan and funding to do something there, I think that they should bring it forward because I would hate to have us move the sculpture park to a different location and then have them not actually come through and do anything. That would be a shame, that would be a lot of effort on our part for no gain. I think that they need to come to the town and say, this is our plan and this is our funding. Uh, and if that becomes a real thing, well, then I think the sculpture committee would say, sure. But, uh, as I said, that piece of land has been empty for a very, very long time, except for that one hay rake. And, uh, I reached out specifically to them to say, would you meet me at the park, I think this was last Tuesday, to find a better position for the hay rake and to find an additional artifact? And I will make signs that match the signs for the sculptures, uh, so we can work together on this. And, uh, they didn't show up. Actually, I think somebody who I believe was a member of the historical commission did drive up and spoke very harshly to me from her car, which I thought was inappropriate. And I said, thank you for your opinion, please send us an email. So it's been a very unfortunate, um, the timing was bad. But I'm gonna go back to what I said a minute ago. If they have a plan, I think that they should bring it to the selectmen and they should show their funding and their plan because without that, why should we bother to move? Doesn't make any sense. How many years has that field been empty? There is a secondary opinion that modern sculpture is inappropriate in the center of our town. And, uh, I would suggest that the enthusiasm of the town for the sculpture park indicates that that's not an absolute valid concern. And I can also point to all kinds of examples of modern architecture and art.
Alright, alright, Jack, we're, we're getting, we're getting into an area right now that we don't, we, no one's gonna make a decision tonight on this. But I, I asked a different question and I haven't gotten the answer and I was wondering if we could go back to my question. Which had to do with the liability of people sitting on the stone. Um, and you know, if it were to fall or break or someone were to slip on it or something. Uh, I remember we had a, a conversation a year or so ago uh, about somebody being responsible for the liability of any of these things. Could you update me on that, please?
Well, I think we spoke to the town attorney about liability on the sculptures because benches only came up about a month ago. Uh, and the attorney said that the town liability would cover the sculptures, either damage to the sculptures or damage by the sculptures. Uh, I would certainly say that, um, we'd probably work with, uh, Frank Anderson and DPW to make sure that everybody feels that those stone benches are not a hazard, are not gonna fall down and injure people.
And Paul, do we have some kind of a, a policy or place in the policy for this kind of thing?
Uh, yes, we do, Bob. When we looked into it, I mean, I'm sure everybody knows we get sued all the time, uh, if somebody falls anywhere in town. So, um, I do believe, uh, uh, that won't be an issue in terms of coverage for, for the benches.
Okay, could we just confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I could also, uh-
Okay, so now, Mr. Sax.
There's already-
I'm gonna step in for a second here. Uh, this, this is, this is all about whether or not we want to put the stones on the common for benches or not. I think it's, uh, we've all made our points of where we want to be. Um, I haven't said anything yet. Um, I agree with Mike a little bit about the, about the, um, uh, Mike, what's it called? I lost track of thought here.
Historical-
Historical, thank you, Bob, historical commission. But on the other hand, Mr. Sax, I agree with you also that maybe they should have done something. Uh, Mr. Sagarino, quick question. How many years will they be on that piece of property before we, is it two years? We made a two-year commitment to this?
Yes, two years, Mr. Chair-
Two-year commitment. So my opinion right now is that, uh, we, we, we'll give them the two years. That's, that's our, we've already done that. And if we put benches on it, um, then we put one or two benches on it, one with a backing, one without a backing, for people to sit there. Those can always stay there if they decide to move over to the common, uh, with, with these sculptures later on or we, if the historical commission comes up with something else. So at this point, I'm gonna look for a motion, uh, because we could talk about this all night long once again. So I'm gonna look for a motion from somebody in a second to, uh, approve or not approve the, the benches at the sculpture park.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Mike, do you think that they would feel the same way about us putting in the standard benches that rec uses throughout the common? In other words, are, in addition to stone, are benches, would benches of any kind be, uh, be interpreted by historical commission as insult on their future plans?
I, I, John, I think that such large stones, I, I, and I'm speaking for myself, that they may view them as, as more of a permanent structure. If you had a, a traditional wooden bench, and I understand that people would like to sit there, sit down there, uh, I, I think that would be more palatable at this time. I, I, I'd love to see you take advantage of the stone cutter that you got. I don't know if we can, if you can, if they would be willing to carve the stones on the Mary Cummings site until we, uh, can agree for an appropriate placement or not.
Well, one possibility, of course, is to build a bench near the big dog, which is not in the property in question. I'm not exactly sure where that would go and we hadn't thought about-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we, is this a, a, a all or none? In other words, can we just, are we voting on three or can we vote it in stages? Uh, almost like we did with the sculptures. One, approve one by the dog. Um, see how that goes and then maybe figure out benches two and three down the road. Or at least, you know, I don't want to not have the kids not, I want the kids to lose this opportunity, but I also want to do something that satiates everybody. So if we did that one bench by the, by, by the dog, it's not in this area that it's already in. The kids get to do something and we still have almost two years to decide the other, the rest of the stuff.
Let me ask a quick question. Uh, George, these benches that are gonna be carved in there, uh, with your students and, and the, and the architect himself, what's the average timeframe of doing something like that?
Well, I don't, I, I wouldn't know. We would have to talk a little bit more with this, with the sculptor. Um, and, uh, John has been talking to him far more than I have. So, um, I think it's something that we'd want to get done in the next several months, but-
That's what I was getting at, that's what I was getting at, was the next several months. Is it, is winter gonna be here too quick? Is this gonna be a spring project? Is this gonna be, uh, a, a winter project? Or do we have time to sit down and go, okay, tell you what, we'll let you put one, we'll let you put one up right now. We'll see how it is and then we'll go from there. So I'd like to continue this, I would like to continue this to a further meeting with all these questions being answered instead of just keep going back and forth.
We were gonna try to put in one soon as we can before the winter got heavy and then two next spring.
Betty, when's our next meeting? Two weeks?
Sixteenth.
Hold on, hold on, Joe, get my calendar.
It's the sixteenth, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it's November sixteenth.
So what I would like to do is I'd like to continue this till the sixteenth. I know it's two weeks out, it's two weeks, but the sculpture's not gonna make, it, it's not gonna build it or not build it within two weeks, I pray. Um, so in that way there, we can get some of these questions answered. Board members, we can discuss this, uh, to, to see if we're gonna do one on the common. Now, now that's another spot from what we're talking about. We were talking about the sculpture park, but we never, the common was never brought up in conversation.
Right, well, it was and it was, it was excluded.
I don't, I might, I personally, I don't remember talking about the common at all. So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, uh, I don't remember that discussion at all. I remember strictly sculpture park. Uh, I'd like to know an actual number, are we putting up two of them in the sculpture park? I'd like to know, I'd like to talk to historical commission to see if they have a plan of any, any capacity.
Could Mike, could Michael talk to them and get back to us, Mr. Chairman? As, as part of this? And then, and then Nick can continue to have conversations about this.
Right now on somebody postponing this till November sixteenth.
Motion made.
Motion made, second by Jimmy. I'll go right down the list. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Okay, so let's move to the sixteenth, okay?
Yeah, let me just say, we're gonna have a sculpture committee meeting before then, so we'll have a chance to talk about it.
Okay, great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, everybody. Okay, uh, Mr. Sagarino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next up, I believe Ms. Simon is here, uh, in the meeting with us to discuss, uh, continue on the conversation you, you were having about, uh, the meadow over at the land, the landlocked forest.
Okay, um, Martha? Did you get the email from, um, did you get the email, Martha?
Yes, I did.
On the meadow? Okay.
Yep.
So what, what do you, what, um, what would you like to do? Would you like us to vote on this or would you like to move it off till the springtime?
Well, I, I guess because it got brought up last time and we had talked about, you recommended that you were suggesting because there is still habitat through the winter, that it would give more habitat for some of the wildlife and John certainly agreed with that. And, you know, that's certainly true. I know in the past, we were trying to do the meadow mowings twice a year, but we just don't have the volunteer power to do that. So, um, we would like to go forward with this next spring, uh, because it has been over a year since we've mowed the meadow. And so it occurred to me that maybe tonight you could just, if we could get your permission, it'll depend on the weather, but your permission to do a meadow mowing next March or April. Um, and, uh, so then I wouldn't need to come back if, if you're comfortable doing that and voting.
I would, I would prefer that, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Tigas?
Um-
Would you like to vote on this March or April or would you like them to come back? It's only, it's only a two-minute meeting when they come back.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I prefer them to come back.
Mr. Runyon?
I'm, I'm fine with voting on this tonight, Joe, for the spring.
Okay, uh, Mr. Priest?
I'm, I'm fine with voting on this tonight.
Okay, then we can vote on it tonight, but I'll tell you right now, I'm in favor of you coming back in the spring. If you do the math, it's gotta come out to the springtime. That, that way there, it's a, it's a better, it, I think it's better, I think it's better for the meadow itself when we really know what's going on, what the weather's gonna be like, whether it's muddy in there, whether it's not muddy in there. We approve the springtime and we don't know what day it's gonna be. And it could be a, a rain day and then I'd rather just see it done in the spring, becoming in front of us. It, it's, I think it's better for the meadow and the, um, ecology of, of the land itself.
So-
I'm a big environmental guy, I like this stuff.
Can I be clear that we are saying that we will not be doing a meadow mowing this fall? That we are asking permission to do a meadow mowing in the spring, either in March or April, depending on the weather?
And we're asking you to come back in March or April when we know the dates are gonna be?
Because I was not finished talking, go ahead.
No, you weren't. And I said, we, we, we were gonna do it in the March of spring when we know it's, when we know what the dates are with a rain date, Bob.
And again, in, in the spring, we won't know the weather either for sure.
Okay, okay, we'll vote on it. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to vote on March or spring to cut the landlocked forest?
I, I'll make the motion that, um, they be given permission to do that, um, with John Keely's, uh, direction as to when that right time is.
Have a second, Michael seconded? Okay, we'll go down the list, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes, with, uh, Bob's, uh, uh, language regarding Mr. Keely.
Mr. Tigas?
I, I'm a no, but I would like to explain it after the vote.
I'm a no also, so go ahead, Jimmy, explain it.
Uh, the only reason is I hate to vote on something months, well, not, not because it's this particular issue. I would hate to vote on any issue that is months down the road when we have, you know, two, three, four, five months between now and then. Martha, it's not that it's because it's a landlocked, uh, is the reason why. It's just the process of voting four, five months ahead in advance. That's, that's the only reason. It's procedural.
So my reasoning is the fact that it, I have no problem cutting the forest down in the spring, none whatsoever.
We're not cutting the forest down, we're just gonna mow the meadow.
Okay, we're gonna mow the meadow in the spring.
Okay.
When we mow the meadow in the spring, I want to know exactly when it is. I want to know who's gonna be in there for biking. I want to know who's gonna be in there cutting the meadow down. And doing it this way, we have no idea when that's gonna be. We're gonna wait for Mr. Keely to tell us and we may not, it, it, I just assume wait for another meeting, it's not a big deal.
Share all that information in the spring.
We understand that.
I could come back in the spring, but it sounds like we have a three to two vote that it's approved, so-
Yep, you do.
Okay. So, um, I will be, I will also be sure that I will share the information through Mr. Sagarino and Betty. to all of you about when we're planning on doing it with our possible rain dates and all that other kind of thing. And we'll be sure to share all that information for you, with you when the time comes, okay?
Great, thank you.
Is there anything else that you'd like me to share with you in the spring when we make this plan?
Nope, not for me, no.
We'll hear from Mr. Keely.
Sure, sure, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Martha. All right. Okay, gentlemen. What's next?
No, not yet, Joe, you have to continue. I think we didn't have all in favor on a roll call.
Didn't I vote on that already, no?
I think, I think we just stopped.
Yeah, we voted, but you didn't say, you know, you didn't say that it was passed.
I'm sorry, we did vote, so it was one, two, three in favor, two against, Betty.
Maybe, oh, that's okay, may I have a roll call on it?
Yep, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiggas?
No.
Mr. Priest? Mr. Morandi, no. You got that, Betty? So three to two, the noes were myself and Jim.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where are we?
Changing the name.
Mr. Sagarino, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've been sort of discussing the idea of modernizing the name of the board for several months now. I think we started talking about it at last January. And again, if we want to move forward with this for the next town meeting in, in January, then I think that we'll need to get your official, official vote as to whether you want to proceed with this. Again, just trying to modernize what we call the board to modern times. And from this point on, I think from what we've determined, we have legal working on it, but it would be, you know, three separate warrant articles, one that will work its way through the general bylaw review committee process. We have a zoning bylaw, which we'll have to have a planning board hearing and possibly go through the zoning, zoning bylaw review committee. And we also may have to adjust the town charter through the legislature. So there's actually three components to it. And if we're interested in actually moving this forward, we will, we want to be able to start that now. I also noted that Mr. Martin, who had sent you guys a little bit of a history on, on the name board of selectmen and sort of where it came from, as well as some ideas from the general bylaw review committee is here. But at this point now, what I'm looking for for the board is to whether or not you want to proceed with this initiative at this time, and also some guidance. I know that Mr. Martin and his team had a suggestion on what to call the board, and I know that we received another one from another resident to call it instead of select board, town counselors and town council. So we're here to see if you're willing to take a vote on that for now so that we can start the process to sort of bring this to the town for January.
Okay, gentlemen, Mr. Priest, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think, you know, I'd be in favor of changing the name. I think, you know, as, as times change, and, you know, we aim to, you know, express inclusivity more. You know, it's, it's, you know, one half or the other. I think some people are for it, some people are against it, and that's not saying that's a, you know, men versus women thing or a gender thing. I mean, I know plenty of, you know, people who identify as, as female who are fine with selectmen. You know, I think that, to my knowledge, the Mass Municipal Association changed the, the way that they refer to the select board. Over ninety towns and cities across the Commonwealth have changed. You know, I think that it would, it would be appropriate for us to find ourselves a, a more neutral and inclusive name. You know, town council makes me think of our, our legal council. I'm not opposed to it, it's just, you know, I think that's how we refer to, you know, legal council, and so it's just, it sticks in my head. But I wouldn't be opposed to select board or executive board or, you know, something along those lines.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I, I, I'm leaning towards something like town council, but I don't have a lock solid opinion that would keep me from supporting anything else.
Okay, Mr. Runyon?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know that towns are trending in that direction, and if I had a choice, I would go with changing the name to Town Council.
Okay. Mr. Tiggas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't really, you know, zoned in on one or the other, but I have no objection to bringing it forward to, to, you know, bring it into the modern day era and take it from there.
Okay, so we'll need a motion on this because it's for approval to start to talk about it. Yes, Mr. Priest?
Mr. Chairman, Paul, if I may, do we need to have a decided name before we vote to bring it to town meeting? Or is it just, you know, we're voting to be in favor of the idea of changing the name of the board, and we'd allow town meeting to determine that?
I think we still have time to decide on that, but I do think that if we want to get, get the process started, and I know that the appointed boards want to get started on this, January town meeting will be here before you know it. So, I mean, we could defer on what the actual name change would be, you know, to the sixteenth or something like that. But certainly, if we could get a vote on the concept going forward, I think it's a, it's a simple find and replace, you know, from select board to town council to executive board, whatever the board decides, you know, that, that's sort of an easy change to make before we, before we get on this. But at least in terms of the concept and whether or not to at least start moving it through the, the other boards' processes, we could use a vote to at least advance it as it is, as, as select board for now. And we could, we could get some input from others on that as to what the name should be.
Sure. And, Mr. Chairman, one more question, if I may. Mr. Martin, you don't have to answer this now. I know we're getting on in the evening, and I appreciate you hanging on the call, but I'd love to know your thoughts behind executive board and some rationale there. I read your document, but I'd love to talk more about it, and, you know, if there's any other, or like what, what brought you that one specifically. But again, I don't, you know, I don't want to drive the whole, the whole conversation. You're probably talking for a while with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I speak? As you know, I, I'm the chair of the bylaw review committee. The reason this came up was that in the September warrant, the, the article which changed, was going to change it to select board was withdrawn. And we were, we didn't even hear about it, and we were, one, we were discussing why hadn't we heard about it? And then the conversation kind of ran into, well, is the board, select board the right name? Because it's a, it's a, an old fashioned antiquated name. You know, it started back in the sixteen, seventeen hundreds, where towns were much smaller, and they just kind of said, hey, Joe, you want to be the road guy? And then it grew into, well, maybe we ought to have a more formal process. So we'll nominate and vote on a selected group of people, usually men, that over time became generically called the Board of Selectmen. So it's old, the, the basic idea of the Board of Selectmen is equivalent to the executive branch of the United States government, if you will. It's the executive branch of the local government. And then so in our discussions, we, we came up with this idea of, well, why not call it the Executive Board? Or the Executive Committee? Or something along those lines to better define the fact that this was the executive branch of the, the town government. So that's where we came from, where it comes from, and how we got there. And we, I, I just sent a note off to Paul and said, are the folks on the Board of Selectmen going to bring this back to the January warrant? Because if they are, they need to have it, Betty, by December eleventh. And that leaves us, they need to make a decision by the seventeenth of November, because that's when we would have, we would be meeting in order to review the article to vote on it. So it sort of was a push and pull, and so here I am asking you what your plan is and proposing that maybe select a board is a little, little different.
I'm going to interrupt for a real quick second. So right now, our, our thoughts are that we're going to change the name. We're going to have this back on the sixteenth again, right, November sixteenth is our next meeting. We're going to introduce a couple of names at that point. Is that what you're looking to do, Mr. Sagarino, and then go from there?
Yes, that would be helpful, Mr. Chairman. If you can't come to a decision as to what you would actually like the name to be tonight, then at least we can start getting the paperwork moving forward, and then we can, you know, decide on that last change at our next meeting.
That's what I, that's what I would like to do at this point, so there'll be no approval tonight on name changes. This is something that, on our next meeting, we can come up with a few names, and we'll work on it for, so that we can get it ready for town meeting. So we'll, we'll push this off till the November sixteenth meeting. I don't think I need a vote on that, just a head nod would be great if anyone wants to just move this off to the sixteenth. All right, Betty, do I need a vote on this to move it?
What do you, what do you think, Paul? I'm not even sure you need a, a motion on it if you just want to continue the discussion to the sixteenth.
Yeah, I would agree with Betty. I don't necessarily think we need a formal vote on this, we just add it on to the, to that agenda.
Okay, so we're going to move it off to November sixteenth at this point, okay? All right, so thank you, Mr. Martin, I appreciate your time and effort, and thank you, everybody else.
Scott, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Sagarino. I believe it's subcommittee time, right?
Yes, sir.
We'll start with Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick things, because most of the things that I was going to talk about, subcommittee wise, were agenda items this evening. Economic development, Melissa is charging right ahead. I just wanted to share that she's working on a, a website to help developers and businesses understand more about Burlington, to see available properties. She's currently working with an agency that's doing a fabulous job. Selectman Runyon and I have seen some of the preliminary work, and they're doing a fantastic job. So I'll be very excited when that's closer to fruition, and we can share that with the rest of the board. And of course, in general, she's just doing a bang up job, you know, really advocating and speaking with everybody. You know, and, and just, you know, I mean, we're very lucky to have her. It was very fortuitous that we hired her in a pre-pandemic world, because she is proving to be a very valuable asset to the, to the community. I'm working with a couple of different stakeholders, as well as the schools, from a diversity perspective, to get the diversity subcommittee kind of up and going with some more information to report back. So hopefully, before, before the end of the year, we have some, some solid ground to stand on. And then lastly, wearing red, white, and blue tonight, you know, just want to remind everyone tomorrow's election day. You know, to be, to be quite, to be perfectly honest, in a nonpartisan way, you know, voting is our right as American citizens, and I, I encourage everyone to exercise that right in every election, from local all, all the way to national. So, you know, get out and vote. I believe, Bob, you were saying this morning that we have eleven thousand of our seventeen thousand registered voters already clocked at the, at the polls, so we're well on our way, Burlington, great job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We heard the governor today talk about some of the changes that he's putting into place because of the uptick in the cases, the positive cases in the state. And he's going to have a stay in place order starting Friday night. And because of the state, the stay in place order, they're, they're cutting down on the closing times for restaurants and the sale of liquor and alcohol to nine thirty. And we are going to be keeping track of that for the establishments in Burlington. And if they continue to, to rise those positive numbers, we may get another update from the governor, and they have to step back further. So it's, it's, it's not over, it's, it's not even close to being over. And there's a lot of people who are struggling, not only with the disease and the pandemic, but with the consequences of it relative to businesses not staying open, people not having jobs. So just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tiggas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the water, Paul, can, we have John just give us an update at the next meeting as far as the Adams Street pipe is going? Thank you. The only other subcommittee is the fire department. The new ALS ambulance has been put into service. Again, we went into the ALS system. This, this new ambulance has, I don't know if you, well, I'm sure a couple of us have been transported by the ambulance before, but this has a new spring system that makes it a very smoother, a much smoother ride.
We'll never find out.
Yeah, one of us will find out. But the other thing is, it's got a really unique decontamination light or your unit in the back of it, so it's a really interesting piece of equipment. And just want to let you know that's up and running and out on the streets. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know tomorrow's election is getting all of the headlines, but I just want to remind folks that next Wednesday is Veterans Day, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our veterans, both, both past and present. I believe Chris Aniffen will be doing his thing on Bcat again this year. The other thing is council on aging, again, doing the best they can under the circumstances of COVID. They've got a program, a grab and go type of a program up there. The seniors can come through on certain dates. They've, they've had ice cream socials, they've had some bagged lunch, bagged, bagged lunch days, and for Thanksgiving, there's a little drive-through Thanksgiving meal thing. So, you know, kudos to Marge and her staff for trying to do the best they can in a difficult situation. And finally, we had a little taste of winter over the weekend, as you all know, and DPW and recreation crews were out there, and I'm happy to report there were no issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Real quickly, Mike, I don't have to talk about the snow plowing, and we'll talk about a bunch of different things, so that was really good, thank you, guys. Just a real quick shout out to the Travis Roy family. Travis was a Boston University hockey player. I got to know him pretty well over the years of going into BU and cutting his hair. You know, having a little fundraiser farm at the Bobby Shop, which was really nice. Great kid, very, very, very much impacted a lot of people in this world. All I can say is my thoughts and prayers go to the Travis Roy's family right now, thank you. Mr. Sagarino? Anything for your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge, given the election tomorrow, the amazing effort that's been put in by the town clerk, Amy Warfield, her office staff, Kirsten Midgley, Linda McNeil, Kate O'Shea, and the countless election workers, volunteers, high school students who have helped us out through this time. We really got a great system, they work really hard at it. And, you know, because of their efforts, I think that we'll be reporting pretty solid results very, much earlier than the rest of the country tomorrow night. So they've done a great job in our election. I just want the residents to know our election is in great hands with the work. pretty solid results, uh, very, much earlier than the rest of the country tomorrow night. So, um, they've done a great job in, uh, our elect, I just want the residents to know our election is in great hands, uh, with the work, uh, that, that our folks are doing. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Um, old business, nothing, new business, nothing. Anybody out there, uh, on, on, would like to speak on citizens time? Nobody has anything? Okay, uh, I'll need a motion to, uh, close. Motion by one, uh, law op second by Jimmy. Um, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Yes, motion carries. Good night, gentlemen.